Late, my apologies that I'll take the hit on that one. So, but welcome to Monday night, August 7th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Lupi Moy. She is a member of the Church of Christ of Latter-day Saints. I would ask you to please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, hallowed be thy name. We come before thee at the beginning of our city council meeting and we are so grateful for all that we have. May we recognize all our blessings and...
Can you lean forward a little bit? We're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Almost get it really, almost get right up to it.
Okay. Father in heaven, we're grateful for all that we have and we ask thee that thy Spirit be with us at this city council meeting, that we will recognize a need and that we will be able to work together in harmony even though we have differences. We ask thee that what we do may be right and fair and please bless everyone here in our whole city, in our beautiful city of Independence. We are grateful to be here and to be blessed. Please bless our children and all those that are helpless and in need and please bless everyone in our city and our leaders and our law enforcement and all who will protect us. These favors and blessings we ask thee for in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, free, healthy, and just for all. Madam City Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeyer?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. If we could, I would just ask the group to take it out of order just a little bit. Can we do the resolution for the I-STAR prior to the citizen's request and just make a move to do that? And if I can do it by a voice vote, I'd be, you know, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And could we do it by a voice vote?
Yes.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll proceed. So, are you ready for the I-STAR proclamation? And Mr. City Manager, you're ready, is that correct?
Kim, Kim, Kim. I think she went to find it. So if I can, let her reverse back to our original point so that she can find that and then we'll go to citizens' requests with there's no objections. With that being the case, would Lucy and Jason like to do rock, paper, and scissors and see who wants to go first?
I've asked Jason to go first.
You've asked him to go first. I just wanted to be, I know there were some discussions, so I just want to make sure that everybody's in the same end of the same page. So with that being said, Mr. White, you have five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. My name's Jason White. I live at 1024 South Forest here in Independence, Missouri. I want to speak to you about your ordinance number, second read, 23-065, and actually the section marked 1.16.017. It's language that would prohibit the council from recruiting members of the citizenry to run for the city council against incumbents. And it's really sort of an interesting thing. Now, you all recall, I serve in the council, so I've got that perspective, and Lucy will bring that same perspective when she comes forward. But I, when I read this, I'm not quite sure of the problem that it's solving. So I would appreciate some indication of what that is as you all go through your voting process, but when you read it, and it reads, and it's a short read, "The mayor and members of the city council shall refrain," interesting word, "from recruiting candidates to run against incumbents presently serving as mayor or as a member of the city council, as it may create conflicts of interest and undermine the democratic process." I don't know what that means. I've been around a while, and I don't know how you get a conflict of interest if you're working with citizens to try to promote people to run and serve their community. I also find it real interesting that at the same time you're wanting to make it illegal for the seven of you to engage with the citizens in their civic process, that happens on a regular basis at the federal level and the state level and the county level. In fact, there are formal processes where groups of those legislators go out and seek candidates, say, who would be good to serve in these roles, and they absolutely do it with regard to people that are open seats or incumbents. So while you're thinking here in little old Independence that it ought to be illegal, I can't find anywhere else where it is, and on the broad scope, it is not only absolutely legal, it is done and done on a regular basis. Now, I can't say I always agree with what seven of you do. Some of you I'm not always proud of, and so the people you would go recruit, I personally would probably say, oh my gosh! But that's not, that's to be worked out in the ballot box, in the campaign process, not by you all choosing to force you and your heirs to be quiet in this matter. So I'd like the problem statement that makes sense. I'd also like to point out, there's a little thing called the First Amendment in the U.S. Constitution. I'm not a constitutional scholar, but I'm knowledgeable enough to know that political speech is extraordinarily protected by our U.S. Supreme Court. Refer you all to Citizens United, that shocked many of us, that they equated money with speech, protected speech. So elected officials being denied the right to communicate with their citizenry, I, not an attorney, but I don't think that meets the pale of a First Amendment argument. So I don't know why you all want to go down that road at all. It's clearly protected political speech. But the biggest concern is, why do you all want to protect incumbents? So what is it about your jobs, your powerful political positions that you feel uncomfortable with, that you need to write an ordinance that says, within your little group up there, you're not going to pick on each other, you have some sort of protected status? I'm not sure if that's what went through the minds of the authors, but that's the way we read it. You all now become a protected class of which the people most knowledgeable about the political environment in the city of Independence are now prohibited from participating to try to bring forward the best in our community to run for office. It's wrong from a voice, and it's more wrong from a, we're not interested in having a protected class. Just because you're an incumbent should not mean that you have any more or less protections at the ballot box than any other individual. I'd mention, I think a lot of folks weren't aware of this language in there. Thankfully, my friend Lucy pointed it out to me, and once again, we're going to oppose the same thing, but we're also going to be watching, because I'm going to be curious to see who thinks this is a good idea, that incumbents ought to be protected in the political process here in Independence. You've got more important things to do. We'd like to know when we're going to get to see a charter, because that's exciting stuff. We've got to build a new police station. We'd encourage you to look at the important stuff and not this garbage. Thank you.
Ms. Young, please come forward and please state your address. I probably don't need to say it, you know the drill.
Yeah, I know the drill.
You've been on this side and that side, so...
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive. He was the warm-up, I'm the bomb. Bill number 2365 does not protect the citizen. The only people in this bill are, that are protected are the incumbent council members, as it is strictly for incumbent council members. All of you are presently an incumbent, so this bill will benefit all of you. That would make you a protected class. How does that protect the voters? Some politicians seek to stifle opposition to protect their power. They do this by passing laws that aim to suppress and limit speech about candidates. They put in place laws that are nothing more than a spoils system with political restriction. To the victor goes the spoils. The speculative benefits of this bill are insufficient to justify passing it, and has not been properly vetted before placing it on the council agenda. You don't need to send this to a study session for further discussion. Common sense dictates. This bill violates the highest law of the land, the U.S. Constitution, by restricting the First Amendment rights of the individual council member. It is biased, self-serving, and not mentioned in the Ethics Committee's recommendations either. Every city council member took an oath of office and swore to uphold the U.S. Constitution. This bill subverts the First Amendment right to free speech and protects only incumbent officials, making you a protected class. When a government attacks free speech, that government is headed towards a dictatorship. That is how politicians build bureaucratic strongholds and protect their own political futures. We don't need to build a system that is designed to entrench incumbent politicians. The Charter Review Committee has already voted to recommend that the city eliminate primary elections. That alone will give you, as an incumbent, a leg up over politically unknown candidates. Remember that Roger Serman was the mayor for 25 years. The First Amendment guarantees every citizen freedom of speech. Your employer can limit that right, and government employees are restricted as well. Our charter covers political activity with the city of Independence employees, but elected officials are not any of those things. This bill overrides the rights of the individual council member and could result in future litigation because it is a violation of U.S. law. If you are seriously promoting a fair electoral process, then you need to consider term limits. You could have a soft term limit law like Lee Summit does, where you're allowed to serve two terms, and then you have to take a four-year break before you can run again. Political endorsements are part of the political process, from the highest office in the land to the smallest of local elections. Sometimes they carry weight with the voters, sometimes they don't. It is a long accepted practice. But overriding the Constitution by suppressing freedom of speech to protect incumbents is totally unacceptable. Campaigning is a tough road a hoe, but as Harry S. Truman said, "If you can't stand the heat, then get out of the kitchen." Please vote down Bill 2365. There is no point in discussing it in a study session. Why waste staff time to discuss what you should already know? Bill 2365 is nothing more than a political censorship and a violation of U.S. law. Put an end to all this political posturing. Vote it down. And Jason and I did not rehearse our speeches, but you can tell that we are both very much on the same page, and I'm sure the citizens would be too. We don't want to see incumbents placed above ordinary citizens that may run for council. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all we have for citizens' comments. Okay. And have we found the resolution? Do we have the I-STAR resolution? This is a different one.
This is the proclamation for OSHA.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the OSHA proclamation.
We will get the proclamation too.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, do we have the verbiage to...
Yeah, it's...
Come on up, Kim, I, it's my fault.
No, no worries. It looks like we know we have everything for you.
Was it in here?
Yeah.
Can you go up and get it in a little, slide it in a place, and bring it back?
Yeah.
Could you do that? All right. That's the best, thank you.
Which is the machine I laid up for the past?
If you can copy it.
Okay.
If you do it. If you can do that, that'd be great. Jeremy, go ahead and proceed. You can, you've got it off of the computer.
Okay, so we are under Presentation Resolutions, 23768. A resolution recognizing Wayne Rucker, Treatment Plan Operator with Municipal Services Department, as the I-STAR Award recipient for August 2023. Whereas the Service Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the city of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the I-STAR Independent Service and Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the Service Recognition Committee has selected Wayne Rucker, Treatment Plan Operator with the Municipal Services Department, as the I-STAR Award recipient for August 2023. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Independence, Missouri, as follows, that the city council of the city of Independence, Missouri, joins in recognizing Wayne Rucker as the city of Independence I-STAR Award recipient for August 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Kovar. I want to take a beating from all of you right now, because the paper was here. Kim did have it here. I want to apologize to her publicly, and I will take the beating, so we'll do that. But also, for Mr. Rucker, reasons for nominating this employee, this employee is being nominated for outstanding work ethic and a jolly disposition, and I love that. He boasts morale of his mentors, and he also works with younger employees so they can be successful on the job. His commitment to the treatment plant is unmatched, often taking on extra hours to ensure the plant is running as greatly as possible. Despite all the extra work and effort, he is still a ray of sunshine, sometimes in cloudy weather. So I think that's excellent. And Wayne, they had a specific example. Wayne was responsible for bringing a new chlorine meter system online, which replaced a much older system. By adjusting the system to our needs and firmly grasping the task at hand, he helped, excuse me, he helped create a reliable and efficient way to make sure that the plant is properly disinfecting the water which reaches the Missouri River. So Wayne, I want to recommend, recognize you, and please join me in applauding Wayne, and we'll come up. Congratulations, Wayne. And we've never quite had quite such a flurry of activity around an I-STAR award, so we will get you the proclamation.
That's fine.
City manager has the award for you. And there we go. Again, let's recognize Wayne. If I'm correct, oh, yep, and please, let's, if we may, let's just take a yea and nay vote for approving Resolution 23768, recognizing Mr. Rucker. And so do I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second. We've got a motion in a second for 23768. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it is unanimous. Perfect. Next, we have the proclamation for OSHA, and we have that ready to go. Can you do it? Okay. This one is OSHA's National Safe and Sound Week, whereas according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the rate of worker deaths and reported injuries in the United States has decreased by over 60% in the last four decades since the OSHA Act was passed. Whereas the city of Independence is committed to the safe and health, safety and health of its employees, and whereas the city of Independence desires to formally declare its commitment to safety in the state of Missouri, and whereas the city of Independence desires to increase management support of and participation for worker safety's programs. Whereas, OSHA's Safe Sound Week is a nationwide event meant to raise awareness and understanding of the importance of worker safety. Whereas when management leadership is sincere and supportive of such actions, workers know that safety and health is an important business concern. This means that the steps they take to improve the safety and health will be valued by our businesses, and therefore we call this OSHA National Safe and Sound Week. And who will be receiving this?
Independence Power and Light and Eric Holder from that department.
All right, thank you. Eric, come on up. Let's give them a round of applause, so, well done. This is very good. All right, this brings us to our consent agenda, and...
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any members who wish to pull items out for separate consideration?
Number one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, perfect. We'll pull out number one. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Number 14.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second, I need to make sure I do my homework, because if I don't, we'll miss it, so... Which one do you?
Number 20.
Number 20?
Number 20.
Please.
23769.
And if I can, I'll just go down the list in order, and Councilmember Hobart was first, and then the other councilmembers will pull it next, if that's okay, if there's no objections to that process.
Let's vote on the...
The other items that weren't pulled, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, we've...
Okay. With that, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Okay, Councilmember Hobart, that brings us to item number one. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I am so excited about this agreement. I'm very proud of our staff. Mr. Walker, Mr. Norris have worked incredibly hard on this agreement. If anybody missed the press release or any of the news, Independence is getting Google Fiber, so very exciting news, very, very exciting news. Competition is always a good thing. Half of Independence homes do not have access to broadband, so any additional providers are huge for our community. And it is a long time coming, especially with Google. You know, they looked at Independence a decade ago, and that they were willing to come back and take a second look at us, really says a lot for city staff and for the willingness of this council to take them as a provider. So just want to say thank you to Google, want to say thanks to city staff again, and we welcome them with open arms. Mr. Walker, is there anything of note about this agreement that you'd like to add?
Well, you're right. It's been a decade coming, and certainly there's been many city staff, past and present, over the year that were involved in conversations, so we are certainly fortunate to be here at this moment in this time when we had the right alignment of city staff and political will on our council and civic leadership in our community that put us back on Google's radar and made this an investment that was worth making for them. So I think we all can feel good about giving ourselves a pat on the back for that one.
Thank you so much again. I, to add quickly, they have not made, Google has not made any announcement as to specifically when they will start work. They have made some indication that it may be the first of next year, sometime next year, so, oh...
If you'd like us to address...
Please.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Merlo. I'm the head of Government and Community Affairs for Google Fiber, and we are so thrilled to be here too, so very, very happy to be here tonight. It's been a long time coming, as you said. To address the timeline question, our plan right now is to start construction Q3 of next year, depending on how much other work we have going on in this municipality, or the market, rather. And then our hope would be to start serving our first customers by the end of next year. The way our bill typically works is we release addresses as the network is ready, so we don't need to have the entirety of Independence built out before we start releasing households for signup. We haven't done the design work yet. I can't tell you exactly where we're going to go first, but following tonight's vote, hopefully we'll be able to put our engineers to work, and we'll be working very closely with your public work staff for a few years to come.
But you're going to start at 11309 East 39th Street South?
I didn't see an amendment to the agreement to specify that, sir.
Well, I can, you know, I can make that motion.
There will be no second.
Rachel, thank you so much. We are actually all very excited. I've heard from lots and lots of people around town too that were very excited. In fact, we got an email even together, so thank you.
Very good.
Anyone else, other discussion?
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. If, and I don't mean to...
Go ahead.
Well, I'm going to do a little question and maybe some cold water on this, so I'm not trying to be the bearer of bad news, but I just want to, is the goal to provide service to all citizens in the city by a certain date? So do you have a framework where everyone in the city will in fact have access to Google Fiber if they choose to?
I'll take it as a two-part question. So the first part being providing access to all citizens. Our goal is always to pass as many addresses as possible. It's in the best interest of our business to pass as many addresses to make them eligible to sign up for our service. Typically, the one thing that can be a barrier from time to time are areas where there is very low density. So if it's a part of town where the houses are really spread apart on large pieces of land, those oftentimes may not be eligible for signup, but that's usually the one barrier that we would see. And we haven't started engineering yet. I couldn't tell you from here, you know, that there's a certain carve-out happening for that. In terms of timeline, city the size of Independence roughly four-ish years to, from the time construction starts to when we finish, but again, that happens with other cities being built at the same time, and also how quickly we can work with staff. We love to go fast, but you know, they have a job to do too, to make sure things are done to their standards and meet their expectations, and so we have that close relationship there. But so far, so good, as we've been having good conversations with your city team.
Okay, so I have a number of questions, and I am so glad that you're here and willing to do this. So with our demographics and the way that our city is set up, you said there'll be some, so we have some rural spots, obviously, to the east. Do you anticipate them getting service based on your knowledge of the past history and where those houses are placed now?
I couldn't tell you from here what the engineering decisions are going to be in terms of, like, there's a certain, you know, target of what closeness has to look like.
Absolutely. From a standpoint of the city of Kansas City, I think you've been in the city of Kansas City for roughly 10 years now, is that correct?
We're about serving customers for almost 11, yeah.
Okay. So my question is, what percentage of the build-out have you had for the entire city of Kansas City?
Sure.
And in those areas that are, say, northern Clay County, closer to Liberty, but in those somewhat rural areas on the other side of 435?
Sure.
Have you reached those areas, and is there a plan to reach those areas? Because I'm just concerned that for all the...
So, and the model looks a lot different than it did in the early days. In the early days of Google Fiber, there was a signup process where people had to preregister and reach a certain threshold of households to qualify for construction. Today, we build out the network, pass as many addresses as we can. And from there, we hope over time that people choose our service, as the councilman alluded to. Even for those who don't choose Google Fiber, they should hopefully see increased speeds, lowered prices, and better service from those who might already be in the marketplace.
So, going back to that question, I hear that roughly 80% of the households have access to it in the city of Kansas City, if I'm hearing you correctly. I was trying to get a rough estimate. And I'm not going to hold you to it, and...
Okay, that's it.
Please do not report this and examine the precision of our answer, if we can keep that out of the record.
It would be greater than 80% of households in Kansas City.
It would be greater than 80%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very, very good. And then, you would think that we could probably have an 80% threshold within four years, so probably the end of 2027 or 2028, depending on when you... You're not going to start until the third quarter of next year, so it'd probably be 2028, if I'm hearing you correctly.
If, on a perfect schedule, yes. It would be roughly four years ballpark to construct a city the size of Independence, give or take, you know, the various... Weather could become an issue for us, too. You never know how that could impact a build.
And this may be a question both for you and the city manager. Is this contract exactly the same contract that other cities have said, that have received? And is the revenue share the same that other cities said?
Sure.
I know you just signed up Lee Summit. So, is this the exact same contract that Lee Summit received?
Lee Summit, we actually reached an agreement with several years ago. Our most recent agreements would be Riverside was last week, just before that was Liberty, just before that was Parkville. So, this looks a lot like those agreements. It's not revenue share, though. There's a right-of-way fee that we pay to the city. It's 1% of all of our broadband revenue that comes in, and that's passed back to the city to basically pay for the privilege of operating in the right-of-way. And that is consistent with all the other municipalities where we do business, in the Missouri side.
And when you build out, if you may, if I may add, what do you think the revenue to the city would be five years out when you're completely built out with the anticipation that most people would be there?
That would entirely depend on how many people sign up for our service, what level of service they're taking, whether it's a $70 product, or a lower-priced product, or an even higher-priced product.
But regardless, we get 1% of that regardless?
And it's intended to look comparable to what a municipality receives based on a traditional franchise agreement. In the state of Missouri, it's 5% of your television fees go back to the municipality. Google Fiber is an internet-only provider. We don't have a television product that we offer, so that's why we negotiate based on a fee of all of our broadband revenue.
Okay. There was another question I had. But you can work with, you know, I just, I wanted those questions answered, because I wanted to make sure that everybody had access to the, to it, because, not to be disparaging, but that's been the complaint in some other locations, that, you know, it didn't go everywhere. And the city had given an agreement, and, you know, and being in government relationships, you've heard that, you know that, you're very well aware of that. So, but you think we'll probably have 80% of people having access to it within a five-year period, once you start construction, roughly?
A build the size of Independence would take roughly four years.
Okay.
The 80% number that, yes, that's not something that I can offer you to say, that 80% of Independence is going to be serviceable within four years.
Right.
And I can tell you, we had good conversations with both Councilman Hobart and city staff with their digital equity questions, too, to make sure that we understood the community of Independence is a very diverse community.
Right.
I grew up not far from here in northeast Kansas City, so I'm familiar with how things can, can be very different from one part of town to the other. And we want to be able to serve as many customers, whatever their needs might be. And to be able to offer that fast, reliable internet service, to your point, that everyone needs today, and that's something that is really attractive about Independence, because your staff has expressed their interest in narrowing the digital divide, being able to increase options for folks. And that was something that we were really pleased with in our conversations.
Another question I have, I know some cities have had some concerns about being put on the poll. Are you going to put all of this in the ground? Is that the game plan?
Yeah, our work is typically underground and within the right-of-way. You'll see most of our work in the green space between the curb and the sidewalk.
Right.
Some places, we may have to attach to polls. Fortunately, we already have a poll attachment agreement in place with IPL. There's a handful of polls that I think they acquired from the old KC P&amp;L a long time ago. So, we have that in place if we do need to go on a poll somewhere. But for the most part, the work is underground.
Okay. Yeah, with us having our utility, that makes it a little bit easier in that process.
Yeah.
Okay. Very, very good. Thank you very much.
Sure. Anything else? I'm here in town and happy to take further questions.
And I hope I didn't come, my intent was to be respectful, but ask difficult questions.
Of course, of course. I appreciate that.
Very, very good. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, with regards to poll usage, any concerns there from a city standpoint of us using the polls in order to provide Google Fiber going forward?
No, we've got a very good partner here.
Okay. And so, that it'll be easy for them to access the polls? And what percentage of polls do we own? Do we own all of the polls, or are there some of them with AT&amp;T?
I apologize. I didn't know we were going to get in this level of detail, so I don't have those.
Yeah, that's fine. And that's my mistake, and that's my fault. And so, I should have done some homework ahead of time, and I will apologize to all my colleagues for that. I will stop. I'm in favor of it. I'm going to vote for it, but I just wanted to ask some questions. So, I hope I didn't cross the line. That was not my intent. Very good. Any other discussion? Let's proceed, then. And please, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeyer.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. The next item is number 14. Councilmember Perkins, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. The organizers of this festival have asked to remove this agreement. They are not going to have it this year. So, therefore, I will make a motion to postpone this indefinitely. Second.
There's a motion and a second to postpone this indefinitely, and are there further discussion? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeyer.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. The next item is number 14. Councilmember Perkins, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. The organizers of this festival have asked to remove this agreement. They are not going to have it this year. So, therefore, I will make a motion to postpone this indefinitely. Second.
There's a motion and a second to postpone this indefinitely, and are there further discussion? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeyer.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the motion passes unanimously to postpone this indefinitely, if I'm hearing you correctly, Councilmember.
Correct.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fears, number 20, please proceed.
Just like to ask the city manager a question.
Please proceed.
Mr. Manager, can you talk a little bit about, you know, $701,000 is quite a bit of money to manage that. Can you talk a little bit about how we do that relative to, do we, are we subsidizing that out of the city budget, or is that pretty much covered? Or how does that work?
Yes, sir. So, this, for everybody's benefit, the Adventure Oasis operating agreement, the city contracts with a private firm for operations of that facility each summer. The pool management company sets a fee that we pay, and then, you know, through day passes, or season ticket sales, or birthday rentals, facility rentals, et cetera, revenue is recouped. That revenue is not sufficient to cover the gaps of this. This is subsidized out of the park sales tax fund, which is not, of course, uncommon for a lot of park and recreation activities in any municipality, but certainly, obviously, heavily subsidized here in our city.
Any idea how much is it?
If the council indulge, I do have the Parks Director who could probably go into a little bit more detail on that for you.
Okay.
I'll ask Morris Heidi to come forward.
Morris Heidi, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. This, the item before you, actually, is for the current fiscal year, and so, until the fiscal year is done, we won't exactly know how much we've subsidized that operation once we have a revenue and our expenses incurred. What this item actually is doing is cleaning up. Several items were voted by the council back in, I think it was February and April, regarding the additional lifeguard pay. And so, this is just cleaning up the PO for those already-approved items. And this is over a multi-year. This is a five-year contract. So, this isn't just for one year for those additional fees. So, didn't exactly answer your question, but hopefully, that adds some additional information.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't want to hold this up for additional information, but I would ask City Manager if he could get back to me with, you know, just a, on an annual basis, you know, where are we at relative to net income on that particular park?
I'd be happy to, and for the council's benefit, we could put together a brief report, not only of the operating subsidy, but what some of the figures look like with utilization, some of the breakdown between day passes and season passes, particularly, as the council knows, the last few years with our change in operating policy and the resident policy exclusive to residents there. So, let's get some data for you, for your benefit. I think that's a very good question that we can follow up on in short order.
All right. Thank you. I'm assuming you're all, I'll move item 20.
Sir, second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Briefly. If we, if we continue this tonight, are we moving to approve it, or are we continuing it? I don't, before we get more numbers, were we waiting to get a report on this to approve it? Or were we going to go ahead and approve it?
I guess I was assuming we would go ahead and approve it, because it's a five-year agreement, and this is kind of cleaning up some, according to Mr. Heidi, it's kind of cleaning up some things that we have been doing.
Okay.
But then, you know, we could...
Okay.
I mean, if it's a five-year agreement, it's five, and where are we at in that five-year agreement?
Honestly, I'm sorry. I don't know off the top of my head. I think we're year three.
Okay.
I believe, but we will confirm that.
All right. Well, I think that, so if it's a five-year agreement, then that gives us really, you know...
I got you.
Get two years, we got two years to work on it.
Take a look at it.
And get some more information. And I'm not that it'll take that long, but I hope it doesn't take that long.
No.
But anyway, so...
If you're on it, Councilmember Fears, that two years is plenty, plenty of time for you to get it straightened out, anyway. So, I appreciate that. I didn't realize it was, that's good.
And I just want to reaffirm, these are the kind of questions and conversations we're hoping to have with the new priority-based budgeting that we've discussed with the council that we'll be engaging in this year. So, don't, don't, not that you would, but don't worry that these aren't appropriate questions. This is helpful to...
Very good.
Move that conversation forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you. No, I'm good. Thanks.
If I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, we do have a motion and a second on this, so we can proceed to vote if there's no other discussion. With that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item 20.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeyer.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Resolution 23, seven sixty, excuse me, 769. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, could you talk a little bit about this $5 million grant and the purpose for that?
We'd be very glad to. This was a collaborative effort across many city departments, but spearheaded by the deputy city manager. So, I'm going to ask him to come forward to speak a little bit to this really important win by the city.
So, this grant application was done in partnership with North Point in connection with the East Gate Project. There were three-year grants awarded across the state, so we were, we were one of those three projects that, that received this. It was a highly competitive process. Obviously, our submission was much greater than what we actually got, but we'll take any money we're awarded for this project. So, the funds would be primarily used for flood control, storm drainage, and then site preparation.
And when you take an area like this that hasn't had a lot of stormwater infrastructure, and that allows future developments to go into that area as well, so even though this is an investment for this particular area, I think that it makes the area prime for future development. Is that a fair assessment?
Absolutely. Anytime you put infrastructure, any kind of public infrastructure at a site, or connect public infrastructure to a site, it provides the avenue and the venue for, for future development to occur. Absolutely.
Fantastic. Special thanks to the city for pursuing grant opportunities that let us stretch our municipal dollars even further. So, with gratitude and a tip of the hat to your team. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would like to second that. Great work from, from the team, Mr. City Manager, and just well done, and it's good to see numbers coming our way in that regard. So, excellent work. Any further discussion on that?
If I could add just one thing, please. I mean, this is a, this is a key partnership with our North Point team here. So, this is definitely a team effort with that team involved, and very much part of, part of this process as well. So, it's a great partnership.
Okay. No, well done on all the areas, and looking forward to the Boulevard being developed. So, excellent work there. Did we get a motion and a second on this?
So moved?
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second for 23, 769. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second for 23-769. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Resolution 23-769 is approved, seven to zero. Okay. That takes care of that. If I'm correct, it brings us to our first public hearing, and our staff knew where we were going and is already ready to go. So, excellent work there. Please proceed. Yep, I have to open it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skennell. I'm the Community Development Director. Summit Pizza is going to be opening their restaurant. This is located in the Hidden Valley Exchange Shopping Center. They are taking up the southern end of that, that shopping center. Prior to Summit Pizza taking over this, their space, it had been a sandwich shop for a number, number of years until it finally closed just a couple of years ago. There, so Summit Pizza is seeking a approval of a restaurant selling intoxicating liquor. There are two other establishments that have liquor licenses within 1,000 feet. We have Aaron's Pub, which is located kind of in the northern part of this shopping center. And then to, to the south along 32nd Street, we have the Farmhouse Event Space. Those are the two that have liquor licenses, and those are within 1,000 feet. This property is outside 300 feet from churches and schools. However, there is residential property within 300 feet, thus requires city council approval. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skennell. Any questions or concerns? This is a full public hearing, which means that anyone can come forward to speak in favor or opposition or provide information only. Does anyone want to come forward to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Does anyone want to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? And I'll do it one more time. Anyone want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Seeing none, I will gather this when we close the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Before public hearing for the application received from Girls World Two, Inc., for a restaurant selling intoxicating liquor and a Sunday sales license for Summit Pizza that will be located at 3010 South 291 Highway, Suite 5. Full public hearing.
Very good. With that, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes. And this application is approved, seven to zero. That'll bring us to second readings. Madam City Clerk, please read 23-062, please.
An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $1,014,375 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of DRE conference fees and overtime programs for the police department for impaired driving enforcement and youth alcohol liquor compliance checks from October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024, authorizing future change orders and/or time extensions for the same project and making the necessary appropriations.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes. And 23-062 is approved, seven to zero. Madam City Clerk, please read 23-063, please.
An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $495,119 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement for a Bosch CDR upgrade kit, an enclosed cargo trailer, LETSAC conference fees, and an overtime program of hazardous moving violations enforcement from October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024, authorizing future change orders, extension, amendments, addendums for additional funding for the same projects, and making the necessary appropriations.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes. And this item passes seven to zero. That brings us to 23-064. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read the bill, please.
An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $106,625 from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for occupant protection enforcement programs from October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024, authorizing future change orders, extensions, amendments, or addendums for additional funding for the same project and making the necessary appropriations.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion on 23-064? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes. And 23-064 passes seven to zero. Pardon me. Madam City Clerk, please read 23-065.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 16, Board of Ethics of the Independent City Code, requested by Councilmember Mike Steinmeier.
Ms. Mr. Steinmeier, I'll give you the floor first, if you like.
Okay. I appreciate it. Mayor, I, I just want to be clear about why I introduced this and the problem that it was intended to solve, since a couple of the speakers asked, and they asked good questions. So, I, I introduced this because the mayor's unapologetically recruited people to run against the sitting members of this council at a time when the districts have been working very hard to bring solutions and discussion for the things that are important to the people that we represent. Now, I don't care if I get beat, but when we're elected to do the people's business, that's where I think the mayor and the council's focus should be, not on electioneering. And that's the problem I was trying to solve, because electioneering doesn't lower crime, it doesn't lower rates, it doesn't build trails museums, it doesn't build police stations, it doesn't build fire stations that we desperately need, and all the other worthy projects that we're focused on as a council. So, having said that, I would like to move to, to remove ordinance 23-065.
Second.
Excuse me, there's been a motion and a second to withdraw 23-065. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And if I'm correct, 23-065 has in fact been withdrawn. This brings us to 23-066. Madam City Clerk, can you please read the bill?
An ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, accepting funds for the period in the amount of $125,952, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion on 23-066? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 23-066 passes seven to zero. That brings us to 23-067. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Truman Connected Phase One Project, Project Number 112102, federal project number STP 3301524.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion on 23-067? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 23-067 passes seven to zero. And if I'm correct, this brings us to first reads. And Madam City Clerk, if you can read all of the first reads, please.
23-068, an ordinance amending Section 3.03.008 Dangerous Dogs and Section 3.03.009 Vicious Dogs of the Independent City Code. 23-069, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Public Transit Operating Assistant Grant in the amount of $105,206.25 for operating expenses associated with transit service for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and making the necessary appropriations. 23-070, an ordinance approving and amended and restated development agreement between the City of North Point Development LLC and authorizing and approving certain actions in connection therewith. 23-071, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 140 East Farmer Street in Independence, Missouri. 23-072, an ordinance approving a rezoning from the District C2 General Commercial to District R30, HUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the properties at 17610 East 39th Street South in Independence, Missouri. 23-073, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate, operate a bed and breakfast at 11913 East Marbeck Trail in Independence, Missouri. 23-074, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I1 Industrial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 1700 South M291 Highway in Independence, Missouri.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. This brings us to Councilmember Comments. Mr. Councilmember Steinmeier, since you're on the screen, I would defer to you to have the opportunity to go first, if you would like to.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I appreciated what, the event that we had last week, and I can't remember what night it was, but that our wonderful folks at the IPD put on in, at the Independent Center, along with a lot of vendors, an A-10 flyover, display of how skilled our, our motorcycle patrol team is and their, their obstacle course, the K-9 units. I tell you, we have, we are just blessed in this city to have a police department that represents us the way that they demonstrate, not just in an event, but on the streets every day. I, I'm so grateful that they, they came out to Independent Center in the Third District, and it was hot, and they had ice cream, and they had water. I just really appreciated everything that they did for our city and, and especially in my district. So, thank you very much to all of them. I do have a question about the information-only section, number two. If someone could help me out on the amendment, I thought we had addressed this issue and had kind of put it to bed, but it looks like it came back up. I'm not sure how or who brought it back up. But I, I'm wondering, is this something that's going to be coming up for council to vote on? And I don't know, I don't even know who to address. Is that something that the city manager can address, or Mr. Mayor, do you want to address it?
Mr. Culver would like to address it. So, Mr. Culver, go ahead and proceed.
So, Councilmember Steinmeier, the way your rules read, any proposed rule has to first go as be presented to the council before the meeting where it's to be discussed. So, that's, that's why this is on here as an information-only item for, to put it out there. But then it would be, it would come to you all as a resolution to actually amend the rules at your next regular meeting.
Do we know who brought this forward? It doesn't clearly say.
No, I've been working on this. I have been talking to a number of councilmembers about this idea of how do we get things vetted in the city council? And so, I've asked them for that point, but I'll certainly, if someone wishes it to be put on the study session next week to discuss it, I'm certainly open to that. I just think there should be a process for how we bring things forward in, in this body so that we study them and, and make sure that they're, they're reviewed and, and discussed prior to coming all the way to the dais.
I, I respect that you want that process. I thought we had already addressed this once before. So, yes, I would like it to come on as a study session item that we can discuss it again, especially since it, this rule change calls for that. So, I would think it would be something that would be appropriate. So, I, I appreciate that finding its way on study session next week. Other than that, I, that's all I have. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
No, great question, councilmember. Mr. City Manager, if I may ask, are, is it appropriate for us, giving us our timeframe to go ahead and put it on the study session? Do we have the, you know, we've got that window of putting things on the amendment, and I would, what's your advice for me?
The.
Or for us as a body, excuse me?
So, just a couple. The thing that's on the agenda for next week was the discussion of the council, pardon me, Mayor, the Mayor's Advisory Committee on Ethics.
Right.
And, and discussion of that. So, that's the only agenda item presently. Your current rules of procedure do state that we'll post these items for public agenda two weeks in advance of the meeting.
Right.
But of course, council could vote to suspend that and ask that this be added for the next meeting, as they're simply your rules of procedure.
Great. I just wanted to clarify that thing. I thought that's how it was, but I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Steinmeier, would you be willing to work together on this to say, hey, let's go ahead and put this on the next study session? Or would you like to have it deferred to the following study session at the end of the month? It's, I will certainly defer to you, because you bring up a great point.
Well, I didn't, I, I didn't hear everything that our city manager said, but if, if you need me to request that or to be in support of that, I, I would like to do so for Monday night.
And that's my question, because I wanted to be respectful to you that these are the rules, and you could say, no, let's go ahead and just talk about ethics. And I was going to defer to you to make the recommendation on that, so we would work together as colleagues to go in a positive direction. So, if you're in favor, if that's what I would wish to, and that the city council, if we may, and Mr. Culver, would it be inappropriate, and councilmember comments, to open the floor for a, a board vote on putting that item on the agenda for next, next study session?
You can add, add items to the study session, really any point in the meeting. So, yeah, if you wanted to do that now, you could.
I just wanted, didn't want to violate Robert's rules there. So, thank you. Any further discussion on adding that item to the study session next week? Everybody amenable to that? We'll just, if we may, Mr. Culver, I'll just take a voice vote on that. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous then. So, please, Mr. City Manager, prepare that document to be put on the agenda for next week on the study session. I'd be very, very grateful.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmeier. That was a great point. Very, very good. With that being said, we'll go to Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Stewart, any, any comments?
Well, I was going to bring up information on the item number two. But I'm certainly going to get some clarity on that now. Just one thing, Mr. City Manager, you brought up the rules earlier for Adventure Oasis as far as resident only. And while I completely understand the reason we have that policy in place, I received a call from a constituent recently that was kind of upset. She's a longtime resident, and she was trying to bring her minor granddaughters into Adventure Oasis, and she was told that she wasn't able to. Do you think maybe we could kind of look into that policy and see if we could do something about that in the future?
I think that's wholly appropriate, particularly as this season's starting to wind down. It makes sense to review the season and events, activities, all of the above, and make sure that that policy still fits, and/or do we need to make any adjustments to be cognizant of all of our residents. So, happy to do that, sir.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember, if I may, just add a thought that I have, because I agree with you completely on that. And if it's amenable to this body from a consensus standpoint, that the city manager bring up a recommendation on that, and we put that on the agenda for the next council meeting, or even call a, a special council meeting after our, after or before our study session to actually address that one item, because I think you, I've got, I've had complaints about that, too. And I just think that's, if we wait too long, then we've missed the season. And I'm just thinking if, you know, from your perspective, would you want to do that? Are you willing to wait? Or what's, what's your timeframe in your mind?
I'm perfectly fine for that. I mean, but the season's going to be over in a month or less, probably less than a month. But I'm perfectly fine either way.
Yeah, I, if there's no objections, I, I think you bring up a great point, and I would like to ask this body if we could just call a, a small special session. We don't have the same rules on that, just to talk about that issue at the next, after the next study session, have a small special session. But I, I want to defer to the group on that and be respectful to all of you. Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor, we only have two more weeks of, of the summer season, and so I would recommend that we just wait for recommendations for the next season.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very, very good. I'm, I'm good with that, but I wanted to ask that question and just see what the flavor of the council was. So, we will wait and just postpone that and, and wait for the next season. So, thank you very much. Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing else. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of us, some of us was at the fire department swearing-in ceremony last week, had several new firefighters being sworn in and several promotions. It was good to see the ranks keep getting full and people promoting up. So, it was good to be there.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember?
Just a quick comment in that.
Pull your microphone over.
Sorry. Quick comment in that last week, we could go today, we met with the Chamber in a kind of a strategic planning session. I thought it was a really good session. We appreciate their involvement and their participation in that process, and look forward to future similar opportunities. The other thing, I have a question, Mr. City Manager. We don't usually talk about first readings, but since we have some folks here that are interested, I wanted to find out on the, the reading on Dangerous Dogs. on the reading on dangerous dogs and vicious dogs, the question I just have on that is, you know, I've talked multiple times about a, you know, some type of an ordinance that would have discussion about responsible ownership, and is that still coming, or I just want to see if that's still in the works, or if I need to take some additional action in that regard?
I believe, and Mr. Culver will help me out, that it was the opinion of legal counsel that our current ordinance provided the coverage that was akin to what we were seeing and what was referenced with liberty. So, let me pause there, is that correct and fair to say?
That's correct.
Okay. So, if, from a staff standpoint, of course, our job being to bring these recommendations, we see that the ordinance currently covers that. If you would like additional language that reflects a certain thing, we'd be happy to sit down and work with you to sponsor that and bring that forward.
Okay, I just didn't realize that had been put to bed, so, okay, I'll...
Yeah, and I'm sorry, to be fair, I can't look at my laptop, so I can't look and see exactly what, the purpose of these changes that were on the first reading are some additional revisions that you all had expressed throughout that process.
Right, I saw that.
And so, if there was, if, you know, if there was something we missed, then we can certainly take a look at that and get that fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Fears. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had the privilege of going to Washington DC for three days as part of my work on the Board of Directors for the Truman Library, and we were there to celebrate the 75th anniversary of Executive Order 9981, which is when Mr. Truman integrated the armed services and also integrated government service. It was three days that were marvelous in celebration of Mr. Truman and really highlighted some of the progress that the United States has made in race relations. And I have to say that we were addressed by the future Chairman of the Joint Chiefs, General CQ Brown, who benefited from the legacy of Mr. Truman and 9981. And it was just a day of celebrating with the armed forces and just very proud of independence. We made an awful good showing. It was lovely, it was attended by many people, and Mr. Truman got great recognition, so just happy to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Walker, I've got a request for you and staff. Could you please find out of the major internet service providers in Independence, Xfinity, AT&amp;T, Verizon, how long they have each been providing broadband service in Independence, and what percentage of households they cover?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I was just noting that down, but I will, I will work with staff to, definitely, I believe we could get to the answer on the broadband. We'll work to get as much info as we can on percent of market share for you.
Sure, appreciate that. And if you can get the exact number of households, I'd appreciate that. Also, if you have any data on how many complaints they've had from residents, either for, you know, I've had a number of people that have complaints with AT&amp;T from failing to repair yards, roads, curbing sidewalks, streets that they've left open. You know, I don't know if we keep track of those things, we may not.
Well...
But if there are things like that, I'd sure be interested to know.
I believe because most of the work you're describing is occurring in city right-of-way, that would flow through municipal services, and we do have a right-of-way enforcement group, and I believe that that will certainly be an easy figure to come to regarding some of the feedback we've gotten from the citizenry.
Sure. And I don't want you to burn a bunch of city staff time on that, just if this stuff's easy to come by, that's all.
Be happy to work on that and report back to you in the council.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I have burnt my time on the discussion with Google, so I'll be extremely brief. We've got a trash pickup, which is on the second Saturday of every month from here to August, September, and October. This week, we will be at Kentucky and 291, so if you're free, Councilmember, love to have you there. In September, we're going to Fairmount, so love to be there. And in October, we'll be at Hill Park, so those are our scheduled. And, Councilmember, I hope you have not had your team pick up all the trash, so we'll have to move again.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll check on that ahead of time to make sure that we've, we have targets available. With that being...
Mr. Rowland?
Absolutely, please proceed.
I thought you would talk about the State of the City address that we did two weeks ago, and if people are interested, you can find it on YouTube. I think it's a great way to look at the variety of interests of the people here on the dais, and some of the great ways the city is making progress, so.
No.
Thank you.
You bring up a great point, and I just want to actually ask the group, since we're all here together, and it's so difficult because of sunshine for us to communicate through email and all of that, I would like to actually take that recording. I know Meg and her staff have been very, very polite in saying that's possible, to take it to another event in the evening so that we could run the video. I would certainly be there to do a Q&amp;A afterwards and allow people to see it, talk about it, and see all of the presentations that you had. You'd all be welcome to come, but I was just going to play the video if that's okay, and then allow that additional opportunity for people who were not able to go during the daytime to go in the evening and see that. So, we're talking about that, we don't have the details worked out, but I am so glad that you brought that up, and I wanted to see if there was any objection or any concerns about that. I don't see it, you know, it's one of those things, I like that, it's not a big deal, move on. With that being said, I have taken up too much time this evening. I want to apologize to all of you for doing that, and we will call this...
Mayor, I'm sorry to...
Absolutely, I apologize, I should have given you an opportunity.
No, it's quite all right, but just for the community's benefit, I'm sure many folks have seen our Fire Chief Doug Short recently retired, and we wish him well in that. I do want to make sure the community's aware that while our ongoing national recruitment is going on, we have welcomed interim Fire Chief Chuck Loush onto the Fire Department team. Interim Chief Loush is here with us tonight, but you'll see him across the community at events, working with the department, and of course, the ABLE team that he's got there from Deputy Chief Stovart down, that will be assisting him and guiding him in this interim period of time. So, I just want to make sure the community and this council's aware that he is here. And a second brief announcement, also with retirement of Dan Montgomery, we made the announcement that we have now merged the Water Department into Municipal Services. Lisa Reynolds and her team inheriting that have years of experience between them, decades, I should probably say, working in municipal water operations in prior communities that they have served, so we feel very good about their expertise with that. But also, some of the redundancies that this allows us to eliminate provides not only cost savings for the general fund, but further reduces the cost of operating the water utility as well, so additional savings for our customers there. So, very excited about both of those things going on in our organization and our community.
Well, I just want to give a shout out to the interim chief. On his very first day, I got lost, and I went to a fire station and asked for advice, and he had already been there on his very first day visiting at the fire service, so I just wanted to applaud him for that, well done, you know, first day on the job, boots in the ground, well done, so thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Thanks for not leaving a baby at the fire station. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
I've never had anybody say thank you for that, so I'll keep that in mind, that's a first, and didn't have that on the bucket list, but there we go. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned.